Hello, welcome to Reality TV. I'm Raymond Bakari. Today I'm joined by Joseph Cornwall, who is running for Providence City Council in Ward 12. The current city councilwoman Kat Kerwin isn't seeking reelection, opening up the seat for 2022. And the ward itself contains the neighborhoods of Smith Hill, downtown, parts of the east side, Elmhurst and Valley. Joe, how are you today?
I very well. Thank you for having me, Ray. This is great.
It's great to have you on. My first question, it's a general one. Why do you want to be Ward 12's next city councillor?
Every time I ask that question to myself, I come up with a fresh answer. So today I'm thinking of it and it's the wa- it's the question my wife Denise would ask. Why, why are you running? What, what's this all about? I have to ask it again to myself. So I think I begin by saying I really have an interest in current events and what's going on in my neighborhood, in the city, in the state, in the nation, and in the world. I, I, I just pick it all up. I love it. And I'm more or less semi-retired, so the last few years I've had time to think about this quite a bit. And as I've watched the nation become split, divided, people are at each other, people feel very disconnected here in the in my ward, my council ward. So one of the reasons I'm running is because I've thought about this a long time and I thought, you know what, there's some things we can do which maybe will help little course correction, get us in a direction we want to go, and maybe not be so divisive. One of the things I kind of privately take pride in is that people who've helped me edit my platform are both bright red and bright blue. And I'm very happy for that. And I think that's a testament to kind of the direction I'd like to see us go. One of the reasons I'm running though frankly is because the openings there. I really don't consider myself a politician, although now I must say I've been one for five or six weeks, just getting used to it. And I think that in our ward, where I've been here now for 40 years, I've watched three councilpeople struggle through this. Tom Glavine was there for, you know, over a decade, Terry Hassett. Kat came in as a young councilperson that's been there for four years. All of them have worked very hard. I mean, it's very interesting to know that Terry was a bachelor. Our senator is, Mary Allen's a bachelor. This stuff takes all your time. And I don't think that's right. You shouldn't have to like sacrifice your family in order to run for government. Tom Glavine basically considered running further in office and he didn't. He had a young family. He said, I can't do this. Kat said to me, she's in school now. She's going to law school and she's busy as can be. And the way our situation is set up, council, councillors are inundated every day and, and they're basically the complaint department. Something the mayor tried to address with 311. So I don't know, that's the beginning of an answer for you.
It's very true though, city councillors working around the clock despite it being part-time and they don't make as much. They're basically on call 20, 24/7 almost to hear complaints from their constituents about, hey, my road is cracked. We have a rodent issue. And this is going to be an interesting primary since the incumbent chose not to run like you had mentioned. And you have two other opponents, Belen Flores and Althea Graves in this primary. What differentiates you from your two opponents?
Well, what's different for me is that I developed a platform first of what I wanted to see happen. And now I'm trying to see whether it has legs. I'm not running in, in a traditional sense of running for office. I'm not making any promises. What I'm trying to do is get some ideas out there for what I say is a course correction for the city. In terms of how we manage the city, that's what my seven plus two is all about. Is those ordinances and city charter amendments I'd like to see happen. I think what's a little different about my campaign is maybe I step back from having immediate solutions to different problems we have and want to address the way we basically structure our relationship to the city. You know, each ward here has approximately 12,750 people. And they're a little bit more than a square mile. This morning I was out leafleting, going door to door. And it's very doable. Walking the ward. At the same time, this ward is got, it, it has more people than almost a third of the towns in Rhode Island. That's too bad. Both 10 or 11 towns have fewer people than our ward does, which is a square mile. So here we are, this political entity, which is beholden to a larger political entity. And that political entity is beholden to the state political, the federal political entity. And the bottom line is, we're we're doing the best we can with the money we have. There's really not a lot more, but they couldn't give us any more money if they wanted to. I mean, they've been printing it like mad, right? So we've got to work with what we have. So let's take a look at how we organize things and see if we can do things a little differently. So it'll be a little more effective and work more for people from the bottom up rather than from the top down. Everyone's doing the best they can. They're, they're trying to make this thing work, which is our city, you know, and our ward. And what I'm offering is what I say in that seven plus two in my platform, which I think is a little different. I'm not really quite sure what the other candidates, Belen and Althea are targeting, which is similar to that. Other than that they both have leadership skills and they're both very committed and they both intend to work very hard for the ward. But whether they can actually be more effective than Terry or Tom or Kat in the structure we have now, I'm saying, let's try structuring it a little differently and see if it helps.
I'm glad you mentioned your seven plus two approach because it's something, excuse me, it's something I find very interesting because it's sort of rare since it doesn't get done in this way often. And for those watching, the seven plus two approach is basically his campaign platform, which is a seven ordinances that he would introduce plus two city charter amendments that you would plan to introduce. Each one is explained in great detail, I should add on the website. Before we look at them specifically, like some of the important ones, can you sort of give a summary for some of the important, some of them for those watching?
Well, I think I start with the first one, which is that the whole mentality of a ward has to be looked at and discussed and maybe changed. And I'm proposing that we call it a council. The reason I say, I, I pick on the word ward. Like I say in there, it, it's great for a surname. I know people named Ward. I don't want to offend them. But a ward is a situation where if you live in a ward, typically you have an orange jumpsuit on or you, you're wearing a Johnny that you tie in the back or you're, you're an orphan. Someone else is making decisions for you. And normal life is kind of happening somewhere else. So a ward indicates that our councilperson is a warden in a sense who's delivering what? Do we bang our metal cup on the bars? Well, I mean, so the delivery system, the relationship between the city and the citizens of the ward, it's off of the wrong foot with those terms. Words have power. And I think the word ward is a troublesome one. Excuse me, I've got to just close my phone here. And I'd like to just start with that. The first ordinance change I would introduce.
Looking at one specific one that caught my eye, going a little further on the list was a proposal number seven. As, as listed on the website, it says it will empower parents to direct tax money for their children's education. I want to ask, would this sort of be similar to the calls for school choice that we're hearing?
It's similar. The point is tuition assistance. The point is who controls the education of children? And it's a question of right order. Okay? So in terms of city government, we look to city government for police, fire, public safety, roads. These are things that the city is their primary responsibility. We know that. Now, in terms of right order with that, parents are the, are the primary responsibility. Or children's relation to their parents is primary. So the city is playing a secondary role there. Whereas the city has a primary role with police, fire, administration, licensing, things like this. Its role with education is kind of secondary. Now, we came into this, you know, in the last century or so because people needed to have an education and it was organized in cities. It seemed to be the right way to do it and it has been. But what's happened is it's become an institution unto itself, which is, seems to be growing apart from the actual parental needs. There shouldn't be a situation where parents are fighting with administrators or faculty over the direction for their children. Everyone should be on the same page. When I was growing up, my parents would, if my parents had a disagreement with a teacher, they would never let me know of that. And it was just for my own health and well-being. And so what's happened is our schools have become such an encumbrance to the city in terms of how it's administered. The fact that the city actually give it up to the state. I mean, oh, what's happening is the education of our children is becoming more and more remote. The decision-making is becoming more and more remote from their parents. And really the decision that, well, was going on with the charter amendment, I think, maybe, I, I think it's the charter amendment, that Councilman Igliosi is introducing having more parent involvement with the Parent Teacher Association, I think. I might be misreading it a little. It, it doesn't go far enough. The point is, it's not a question of whether the city or the state's in charge of our education. Parents should be in charge of their education. And they should be making the decisions. And they empowering them in terms of, of the money. I make a point in there and I've seen this. Once people start a family, they start looking for another place to live than Providence. And that is a real tragedy. We should have great, great schools. And it, it's got to be driven by the parents who want to stay here. I liken it to the fact that basically you have to buy your way out of the public education system. It, it owns the education. State constitution says we're to promote education. I think we can promote education by assisting parents. Parents want the best for their kids. And I think it can happen if we get more control in their hands.
And sometimes in Providence, also in the state, but looking at Providence specifically, this will lead to the conversation about what role should say charter schools have in the city to, you know, some wanted to have more of them in the school, basically an expansion so they could be a viable alternative to the public schools. Others will argue that they take resources away from the public schools. Do you see charter schools having a role in this?
I want to introduce the conversation of parents being in charge. And whether it's charter schools, charter schools are this hybrid. It was this way of like trying to free ourselves from what the school establishment has created. And in a way, it's a half measure too. So like I say, my campaign is about starting conversations, whether or not, you know, the role of charter schools, of the public schools, of the different interest groups that are involved in this. There's a lot of power and money involved in this. I know that it sounds like my program is upsetting to people, but it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be upsetting to parents. The reason I offer this only for the ward, and I'm not going any further within this, is to see whether it has legs, see whether people in the ward are interested in it.
Another piece new surrounding education I want to get your thoughts on is regarding the plans to implement a hybrid school committee, hybrid elected school committee where it's half-elected and half-mayor-appointed. Currently all 10 are appointed by the mayor. It's an interest, it's in an interesting situation right now because the mayor, at the time of we're filming this, vetoed it. And now there's supposed to be a vote today by the city council president, John Igliosi, to override that veto if they can get the 10 votes. Then, then it'll, the veto will be overridden and it can make the November ballot. Where do you stand on that proposal?
Well, you're speaking in a much more articulate manner about what I was trying to address before with what Councilman Igliosi is proposing and the mayor's position. My position is that whichever way that goes, it's not going to really address the problem we have. It doesn't really address the concerns of parents. It's you know, moving the deck chairs on the Titanic. It's a tired phrase, but it's a little bit of that.
So you're not really on board with the idea of an elected school committee?
Oh, they can, they can elect this, they can do it either way. I don't care. I mean, I just don't think it's going to get us where we want to go. It's not going to steer us kind of around the iceberg. So there, that's my position right now.
Pivoting away from education, looking at another part of that seven plus two proposals, one that I also thought was eye-catching. It would be to create a citizen slash owner's financial website where it's easier to know where every tax dollar is spent. When I was reading this, it kind of reminds me of how Mayor Bob De Silva of East Providence is partnering with OpenGov for a full transparency in the budgets and how tax dollars are being spent. Just for those watching, what benefits could you see this proposal bringing if implemented?
Uh, let's see, which, which number was that again? Give it.
The, the, the number itself, I, I believe, I, oh, number three, sorry. I had it written on the side here.
Okay, was, was three the, was it, was that the website idea or was that the?
Yep, the website, citizen.
The website, sure. Well, when I use the city's website, as I state in my platform papers, I see that it's really for the general public. In a way, it's for, it's a consumer-driven. There's a lot of information there. However, the information that is specific to those who are what I call owners of the city, it's a little obscure to find that information. Let me back up a little bit here, Ray. So what I've proposed is that if you pay taxes and you vote, you have this form of ownership in the city. And because you have this form of ownership, you need to know what you're paying for. And in a couple of different ways, it's obscured from us. It's hidden from us. It's not that this was intentionally done by anyone. It just has happened to be this way. If you rent, your lease doesn't indicate how much you're paying in taxes. But your landlord is paying that tax out of your rent. And in my ward, it's typically between $100, $200 a month. You're paying taxes in your ward for, you're buying food out. There's another percentage tax. We're getting rid of the vehicle tax, you know, here, here. That's excellent. We're going to have to find the money somewhere. But the tangible property tax, it's really a tough one. A lot of places don't have that. A lot of different towns, cities, other places. Anyone who has a business in the ward has dealt with this tangible property tax, which, which is burdensome. It's really burdensome. So if you own property and you're paying a mortgage, typically once that mortgage amount goes out every month, you're not looking closely at how much of that was being taxes paid. But it just went up. In fact, taxes I pay on my property just went up 25%. Now they held the, the rate. But this, this information, the information which tells us where is our money going for what that we pay? Well, we need to find out how much we're paying and then we need to find out what is being spent on. And I thought it was important for that information all to be in front of the taxpayer. So I propose that we have a separate website, whether it's one that's kind of locked that you only get into as a, as a taxpayer. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think that would be the case. But a website which really told us what the city's finances are doing. It can be known. We balance our checkbooks. This is definitely more complicated than a checkbook. You need to know, understand all the pieces. But I think actually if people had an understanding of our city's finances, a more accurate understanding, they'd really be more respectful of the work that's done in the city, the finance department, what Mayor Alores has done and Mayor Tavoris before him, what the city has to do to balance the books. I think they do a great job at it. Actually, the point is, we don't have a lot of money. Even though $350 million seems like a lot of money, it has to go a long way. And I, I think, I think they do a good job. I think we need to understand what it is. Each of us are paying into this. And I think it would just be very helpful in terms of deciding, well, maybe we can direct this money, you know, differently or we're involved. It helps us get involved.
It's certainly an interesting proposal and not to sound like a broker record, but every, when you were describing the whole thing, I was thinking of what East Providence is doing with, with OpenGov. It'd be interesting to see how that, how that would go about if, if it were implemented. And that's only one of several of these interesting proposals you have. Looking at the charter amendment proposals, because both of those caught my eye and I want to talk about it a little bit. One is to bring in a runoff voting system where if in the first election, there isn't a candidate that gets 50% of the vote, the top two vote getters advance to a second election. I, the, this is, this one I, I'm more curious about because in Providence, you know, most of the wards, it's whoever wins a democratic primary likely will tramp, trample over their independent challenger in November or even after the September primary, they're automatically a councilperson and just have to wait till they get sworn in. So but there are some wards where we have an independent or even a Republican running this year. I'm just curious, how would this work in that case?
You mean after a primary run?
Yeah, like would, would there, would there be a second election between September and November? I'm just curious how this would go.
It's up for discussion. You know what? I hadn't, I hadn't really thought of it in those terms. I was thinking of it more in terms of the November elections. But the people at the Board of Canvassers, they pull their hair out trying to keep up with what they're doing right now. And I'm sure this makes them dizzy proposals like this. So maybe just to introduce it at the mayor's level or the governor's level is a place to start. So what it is typically, what I'm talking about is it's like the French system where after the vote and you have three people running or more, and one person who's running has got maybe 23% of the vote and the other vote is 21 and 19%. But that 23% of the vote seems to be a really far out position. And so you have a runoff election because really the number two and the number three vote, their policy proposals really together aren't that different and their two votes might add up to 43% or something. So you have the runoff vote right away to make a determination. Does that 23% that was winning, is that going to hold? Or do people really, that was an outlier as a policy position and we should go with the other? This is different from the, some of the things they've instituted with the other voting in New York and California, I think. Which is, it was certainly more complicated.
It isn't, it, it is an intriguing idea, especially for the mayoral level because for example, right now for this year, September's our de facto mayoral election because there's no Republican or independent running in the general election.
Right, which is, good you raised the point.
And that's why I was just curious how it would work for the council races because for example, in your ward, I'll, in, in Ward 12, whoever wins between you, Ms. Flores and Ms. Althea will likely have an easier time going up against the independent. So it's, it's certainly up for discussion, I would assume, if, if you end up getting in the, the council. The other charter amendment proposal, which this one, I feel like it might create some complications, but I'll, I'll try my best to explain it. So this one is if the voter turnout for a council seat is less than half of the ward's registered voters, it would be vacant until the, the next election, election. Wouldn't it create issues with the ward not having representation?
It certainly would, wouldn't it? So people would be making decisions without their input. You mean, is it constitutional? I don't know. But the point is that I'm trying to make that looking at who lives in the wards will now become an imperative. And people are going to start to look inward to their wards more seriously. Right now, the list of voters in the wards, I mean, you look at the list of voters, there's voters there who I know haven't lived in my neighborhood for 10 years and they're on the, on the the poll list, the voters list. And in our ward, there's constant turnover of people every, you know, every two years. So the idea of the ward being very specific on who lives here, I think is a very positive development. And it gets people talking amongst themselves and understanding there's an air of desperation about it. I, I understand that it's kind of the stick. I'm trying to go with a carrot and some of these other proposals with the ordinance. But the idea is that this is serious business. You need to vote. You need to have an interest. I wouldn't do this at the, at the mayoral level or at the state level because those issues become much more complex. You can't understand, have people really have an opinion on them. But at the ward level, we pretty much all have the same issues. And I think we all need to get involved and maybe it's a little heavy-handed. But I think it would help clean up the voter rolls. I think it would really help the Board of Canvassers in that respect. And I think it would, you know, bring some juice to the, to our council wards.
It would, it would definitely create a, an interesting hypothetical if someone won with 49% of the vote because then that's less than the half. I mean, that, that would, that'd be intriguing to see how that, how that goes. Are, are there any concerns that could create a possible controversy if, say for example, someone gets 49.5% of the vote, but they were just under that 50%?
I think people would ask for a recount, don't you?
It's possible, but I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't you be upset if you got 49.5% and they recounted and you still got 49.5?
I think, I think it would be everyone's interest in the ward to get busy and to get down there and vote, don't you?
Fair point. Well, shifting to an issue because aside from the seven plus two approach, there are a few city issues and issues plaguing the ward that I, that I want to get your take on. I also asked the other two candidates. One, this was one that Althea Graves brought up, what's the rodent issue? And I, I can attest to this as a resident of Ward 15, the rodent problem is really serious and they, they run right past your legs when you're, when you're in the street. They're very bold too, once it, once it gets dark outside at 8:00 PM nowadays. I know it's kind of a loaded question, but what approach would you favor to try and address that rodent issue?
This is what I mean when I say my platform is a little generic. But by addressing the issues in my platform, we begin to get to the issue of the rats. So right now, you read the city ordinances on, on controlling rodents and pests. And it's very logical. Makes a lot of sense how we're supposed to do this. The trouble is with the execution. And the execution is difficult. I think for one reason, the city is, is, is really there's no tax base in our city. So, and there's no ability of neighborhoods to know what they can do for the rat problem. Basically, in a lot of ways, the councilperson is asked to be a property manager. And in fact, one corner of our ward, the corner down towards downtown, where there's a large apartment complexes, any place where there's a larger apartment complex typically where there's a large apartment complexes, any place where there's a larger apartment complex typically has very well-run property management. And most of the issues like with the rats and so forth, they just don't surface the way it does for the rest of us who don't have the property management we'd like. And we're asking the city to be the property manager. So the city's coming from Allen's Avenue to come and get rid of rats on Smith Hill and in Mount Pleasant. And certainly by distributing the control of that into each ward, so that each ward can begin to address it themselves, I think would be helpful. You wanna take care of this, the rat issue as quick as you can. And, um, in fact, I think Alfie, Althea will just push, push, push to get this, the thing solved. And we'll get it solved over here because she's effective this way. And someone's gonna be losing out on their, their rat control in their ward because there just isn't enough managers to manage the property. That's kind of my feeling on it. It's, it's, it's.
Go ahead.
Well, it, it's just, it's a cleanliness issue. It's a pride issue. It's, it's an issue of, um, the spirit of people. And, um, how do we get the spirit of people excited about where they live and wanting to be where they live? And knowing that they're making progress, they're moving forward, that, you know, life can be good. They don't feel disconnected. So I'm trying to address this in a more generic way through my seven plus two.
And the rodent issue, it's, it's also a public safety concern. God, God forbid, one of those rats run up and bite a child. That, that's it's a health concern. Uh, I, I don't know who would like, who would be liable in that situation. I don't know if it's a city that would be liable, but it's definitely something, uh, that, and I don't mean to get too opinionated on this because I try to stay neutral, but it's definitely something that's gotta be addressed, uh, and.
Absolutely.
I do wanna talk about public safety, speaking of for, for a moment, specifically more about policing. There's still tensions about if we should defund the police or go all in on hiring of more officers and really beef up our police department. Although it's not 2020 levels or even the same language, then it was defund the police, now it's reimagine public safety. It's still going to be on minds of voters, uh, this year. Um, are you, are you on board with the, the calls to defund the police?
I, I, I don't quite. I can understand the alienation people feel from the police force. And part of the reason, I think, is because there isn't a more effective police presence. By an effective police presence, what I mean is a police presence that's really on the street. And we just don't have the manpower to do that. I knew our postman retired after 20 years. I knew my postman. I know my neighbors on the street. I would love to know a patrolman who walks the street, a, a patrolman who actually had the power to cite a lot which needs to be cleaned up, to cite someone who's not taking care of their garbage, to know who's in school, who's not in school. I've talked to patrolmen about this. The level of funding it would take is, is way beyond what we have now. We have to have what we have now. We have to have the, the two, uh, classes that are coming on board. We need those. But we're not getting anywhere near the idea of a patrolman who we know, who's on the beat, who's walking the streets. And that, I think, would make a huge difference in terms of the quality of the neighborhood, in terms of rat control. I look, I, I've just been walking the ward and you know, the, the vacant lots, they're all in violation of, of the way they look, um, in terms of the summer and in terms of garbage and in terms of being unkept. And people are doing what they can do. Like I say, our, our tax base is in trouble.
It sounds like you're on board with, uh, what's often, uh, characterized as community policing?
Yes, um, community policing though, yes, I am on board with community policing and it's spoken of. And it becomes a name. So we have at the corner of, of Eaton and Douglas is, uh, a substation for the police force. But they're still in their cars there. Uh, I don't know, there is some, uh, patrolmen, new patrolmen, who are new to the force, walking the, a beat is part of that, but it's not something that's part of, it's not institutionalized in the neighborhood. It's, it's just not, you're just not aware of, of that police presence. A lot of times they're on bicycles too. Community policing to me is a little bit like charter schools. It's kind of this hybrid. I really don't know what you're talking about.
Well, community policing is how you described it, walking the beat, being in the neighborhoods. If we have a cookout, your, your police officer's there, hey, how's it going? You know, bridging the divide between the, bridging, uh, what I should say, reducing the tensions that has been there between civilians and law enforcement.
Alls I'm saying is for it to be really effective. Instead of a 500-person force, we need like, like a 700-person force. I mean, it's really something you just can't say, oh, we're gonna institute community policing. It's something that gets built on top of all this. I agree with you. I think maybe we're having just a little semantic discussion here on what words work and mean. But yes, uh, effective community policing is, is, is very much what I'd like to see, but it's, it's, it's a long way away, I'm afraid.
Do you think more?
Effective, to be effective.
To be effective. Uh, it's, it sounded like, and I don't wanna take words out of your mouth, but would, would you be on board with more funding than to have something like an effective community policing program?
Oh, sure, sure. I, I think, I, I think, I think the more presence of the police, the less violent and less isolated the community will feel from the police or the less violence in the community perhaps, I think it is, um, I think it will have a, a peacekeeping effect. Uh, they won't be seen as the enemy if they're, uh, present. And, and if they're being effective in ways that police can be effective. And of course, it would, it would mean making changes, like can a policeman do a housing violation? That takes changes. But I think it's important that we go that way.
One other, uh, subtopic, because we could talk about policing all day because it's a really interesting discussion, but there is, uh, other components of public safety. Uh, one that's a little more controversial right now is the license plate reading cameras, uh. To my understanding, 25 are going to be, uh, put up around the city. Uh, some are saying this is good. It can help aid, uh, aid, uh, law enforcement in fighting crime. There are, there is the crowd that's more skeptical and raising privacy concerns, uh, the current city councillor and your ward is among those. Um, what are your thoughts on these cameras?
I've been caught. So, and then I, oh darn, oh, I, oh, I thought I, so, um, again, if people were aware of of what the Finance Committee knows about making decisions on these cameras. The cameras are put in place to raise money to create traffic calming. So right now where a camera is, you're hoping that a change can actually be made, uh, a hard surface change of perhaps meet either speed bumps. I'm not a big one on speed bumps, but are, are just choking down the, uh, the width of the, the road at a narrower point, making it more pedestrian friendly at that point, putting some kind of rumble strip in there. The point being that we can have other ways of solving this problem which aren't so, uh, annoying. So the contracts with these companies that put these in, it's by understanding they're to be phased out as the money's put aside to actually do the hard surface improvements, uh, for traffic calm. So what was, so my feeling is that people need, need to know themselves. The citizens need to know. How's this being paid for? What's the effectiveness of it? People can go on, watch the Finance Committee meeting to see it. It, it's, you know, will people do it? I don't know. But, um, whether or not, uh, we should get rid of the cameras, again, it's, it's a money issue. This is a money issue. And, um, when people get this look at the hard numbers, that affects their decision-making. And right now, people don't see those numbers.
So ends justify the means in this case?
How do you mean, um, ends justify the means?
For example, it sounds like, so the financial benefit with the intention of these cameras, it does, does it sound like, it sounds like you're, um, I'm, I'm on board with the intent of them?
If people understand that that's the intent, I, I'm not saying, um, that that is the way we should create traffic calming. It's the way the city has introduced already. They have these contracts in place. We can look at it again when the contracts are gone, but we have to look at the whole picture of the city's finances. That's why I say people need to know where money's coming from and going, what it's paying for. Maybe people would feel differently about the, uh, that magic eye there as, as you go by a school. If they had more understanding of.
And a big part of the controversy with these cameras too was the way they were implemented. I, the council didn't really get much input on it. And when there was attempt to, it got, uh, put on a, put on a committee basically for help for further study. Moving, moving away from that though, these next few are shorter form questions I'm asking every council candidate because some of them are, uh, decisions that are coming up, uh, some are when you, if you get elected that you would first have to focus on or at least, uh, consider, um. Do you have a certain committee you would like to be on if elected?
I think DPW and, um, Public Buildings, those are two I'd be interested in. I was an architect, I am an architect, I'm a licensed architect. I still practice. I, uh, closed the office eight years ago. I kept my license. I worked from home. Uh, those are two committees, I think, uh, I'd be interested in serving on.
Which of the mayoral candidates do you plan to support next month?
I'll support the one who wins. I am, I'm more of a from the bottom up than a top down type uh, person in terms of how we run the city. And so I think, I think, uh, Mayor Cuervo would be more in that regard than would Mayor Smiley. And I think probably Mayor La Fortune would be somewhere in between.
Leaning toward, uh, Gonzalo Cuervo?
I think so, yeah.
And, um, this one, it's a tricky one, so I, I, I would, uh, be totally understanding if you don't have an answer quite yet. Um, who would you support to be the next council president if elected?
Oh, I, I, I'm, you got me. I don't know. I don't know them.
Fair, uh, it, it will take time and you'll have the time to, to, um, talk to them each, uh, after, in January or that in between and between November and, uh, January. It's just one I like to ask you everyone because you never know, some people have it in mind already. Um, well, this, this last one, it's one that, uh, is my favorite question to ask because it's a non-political topic and takes a step away from all the political issues. And I always like to save it for the end to keep the tradition. In your opinion, what do you think Rhode Island is best known for?
You know, this is an interesting question because I want it to be known for something else, but you're right. It, it's known as this corrupt and small and, um, people shake their head about it.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say the corrupt, but to, to be, for the.
No, no, I mean, this goes back. This is, this is, this predates, this predates the nation. I mean, we're talking about it, it, right from the get-go. This is, um, uh, you know, probably the healthiest in terms of a nation it was, was when the Narragansett's owned the bay. They had their rivalry, you know, east, north and west. But, um, it sounded like when, uh, Berenzano came here in 1524, he found a pretty healthy establishment. He was pretty happy with it. And since then, I think, I don't know, did Roger Williams screw it up? I'm a real fan of Roger Williams. I, I, I think, I really think he's the grandfather of our country. I think this corrupt, uh, title for our state is unfortunate because I think, um, just between you and I, I think Rhode Island, I think Providence is the center of the world.
Rhode Island is a gem and it's, it's in a perfect location, but it, it really is.
It's the most beautiful real estate in the United States. I've been all over the country and Narragansett Bay, this south facing body of water, the hills around it, there's nothing as nice as Rhode Island. There's nothing, Providence is, has got more potential. I, I said in another interview that I had a, a, a written interview, I'd, we just need to get our mojo back. I mean, um, we just, you know, we, we've got this complex, uh, and we gotta get over it. This is a great place. Rhode Island is a terrific place.
That's very true. I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. Rhode Island's very near and dear to my heart, born and raised here, been here my whole life. I haven't gone outside the New England bubble yet, but, uh, if it's up to me, I would love to stay in this state as long as possible. Um, Joe, I wanna thank you so much for coming on. It's been absolute pleasure mine to have you on the show.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ray. It's been good talking to you for this hour.
And thank you for watching this episode of Reality TV. If you wanna see future episodes as soon as they're posted on this channel, please click the subscribe button down below and the post notification bell icon to the right of it. I'm Raymond Bakari and I'll see you on the next episode.